I'd like to call this meeting of September 27th, City Council, regular City Council meeting to order. Welcome everybody here. It's nice to have an audience out there for us. And we will start with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Councilmember Byrd?
Here.
And Mayor DeVeard is absent.
If we'd all stand now for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Moore, I've seen you come in.
He's right there.
We'll invite you up here for the community invocation. I'll take this as a time to reflect.
Heavenly Father, speaking for myself, all too frequently I make assumptions about what my day will be like. And we can be pretty arrogant, we humans, about our life and what we ultimately have control over. So tonight, I pray, God, that the spirit of our city leaders will be one of humility. And I just appreciate the fact that they've put their life on the line. They've chosen to serve our community and receive criticism. They've got decisions to make in the next few hours that affect lives. And it's an awesome responsibility. So we ask for your wisdom to be in theirs. I pray, God, that you'll continue to bless this community. Seems like we've been spared so many tragedies that now when we turn on the news every day, it's just discouraging. I pray for our police officers, as far as the ones I know, they're the kind of people that really do care about this city. I pray for our firefighters and the servants that we can, again, take for granted, just like we take you for granted, God. Their presence is all around us, so bless them for that. I pray for America and where we're at as a nation. I pray, God, that we'd remember that we do have a Creator and we'd make decisions based on that. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate that. Next, item number four, the adopted agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
We need to add an item five, proclamation for Huntington's Disease Awareness Month. Item six F will be moved to the October 4th, 2016 meeting. Item six I will also be moved to October 4th, 2016. Item eight A, the applicant has requested that matter to continue to October 4th, 2016. And with those amendments, Mr. President, I move we adopt the amended agenda.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to adopt the amended agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, council, with your permission, I'll go down and we'll have the proclamation for the... We've got a proclamation here for the Huntington Disease for the month of October. The Huntington Disease is an inherited neurological disorder typically affecting people in their 30s or 40s, and it is estimated that one in every 10,000 people, nearly 30,000 in the United States, have Huntington Disease. And Huntington Disease is an autosomal dominant disease. If one parent has the disease, each child has a 50% chance of inheriting the defective Huntington Disease gene. And at the present time, there is no effective treatment or cure for Huntington Disease, and it is critical to raise awareness so the advancement of research and support services can continue. To the Southern Idaho affiliate of the Huntington's Disease Society of America, support and services are provided to families throughout Idaho. I, Mayor Tammy DeVeard, do hereby proclaim the month of October to be Huntington Disease Awareness Month in the city of Meridian and call upon the community to join me in raising awareness for this worthy cause. Signed by Mayor Tammy. Thank you very much.
We do appreciate the city of Meridians acknowledging this, and we do welcome anyone who is interested in learning more about it to go to hdsaa.org. And we are having an activity on October 8th at Veterans Memorial Park in Boise where we will be having a walk to raise funds for Huntington's Disease Society of America. So you're all welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, the next item, item number six, the consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
The amendment of item six F and six I, both of which are being moved to the October 4th, 2016 meeting, would move that we approve the consent agenda and for the president to sign and the clerk to attest on all necessary papers.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve. Any comments? Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I heard six F. It's the Hill Sentry project. Is the agenda amended? I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that it's the right projects that are being...
Yes.
Six F and six I.
Mr. President?
Yeah, six F is the acceptance agreement, Main Street.
Okay, not seven. I apologize. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Item number seven, we had nothing moved from the consent agenda. So we'll go into eight action items. Eight A is a public hearing for H2016-0092, and the applicant has requested to continue to October 4th, 2016. Is there a reason why they did? Josh or Caleb? There comes the applicant.
Mr. President, council members, Mike Wardle of Brighton Corporation, this is a complaint about the speed and efficiency of the clerk's office. The day that we got the notice of the hearing was the day that we were going over calendars and Mr. Turnbull is out of the country and would like to be here for the hearing. So we asked for the one week. And we did it the same day that we received the notice from the clerk, but that was my only issue, was just the speed and efficiency of the clerk's office caught us off guard. Thank you.
Nice, nice job.
What's your pleasure? Is there anybody here that would like to testify in that?
Mr. President?
Mr. Borton.
I would move that we move item eight A, H2016-0092, to October 4th, 2016.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to move item eight A to October 4th, 2016. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Eight B is the final plat for Avery subdivision, H2016-0108. Josh, is that you?
That is.
Thank you.
President, members of the council, this is an application for a final plat located at, on the north side of East Pine Avenue, west of North Locust Grove, for 14 single-family residential lots and four common lots on three acres in the R15 zoning district. The applicant and staff have been working through a couple of concerns up until about 3:00 today. At that time, we have resolved those concerns and those issues have been resolved. So my understanding is that the applicant is in agreement with the staff report. The applicant is in the building, so you can ask the applicant, but staff doesn't have any concerns with the application.
Would the applicant like to testify?
I don't need to. I'm happy to answer questions.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? Got any questions for the applicant?
Hearing none. Mr. President.
Mrs. Mylum.
I move that we approve H2016-0108.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve H2016-0108. Any discussions? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Okay, item eight C is a public hearing for CDBG fiscal year 2015 amendment. And I will open the public hearing and turn it over to Caleb.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Just a quick refresher, I'm pinch hitting for Sean Kelly. He's under the weather this evening, but on the 23rd of August, he was here and told you about the potential reallocation of funds as catch, was not going to be able to expend those in a timely manner, and the Meridian Food Bank would be able to use a good chunk of that money. So in the program year 2015 action plan for the CDBG program, there is $13,200 budgeted for, again, for catch, for case management. They're having a difficulty spending those funds, and again, the Meridian Food Bank can absorb a good chunk of them. So we are asking that you hold the public hearing right now. We have not had any comments to date to mention. Once you close the public hearing, though, the next item on your agenda tonight would be to approve the substantial amendment to reallocate those funds to the Meridian Food Bank. And with that, I would stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Caleb. Any questions for staff?
Mr. President, Caleb, I know you're pitch hitting, but maybe just some further discussion about the proposed staff recommendation. Why keep $3,200 set aside for catch? Maybe just some further discussion about what their intention is to use those funds for.
Mr. President, Councilmember Cavanagh, so part of the issue is just the number of families that are eligible for the, basically, it's a counseling service is what the $3,200 that's left will go towards is to counsel families that are within Meridian to get them back on their feet, whether it be assistance with managing money or substance or whatever. But they do have some eligible families. They're just not able to find enough families that are eligible by the federal definition of being homeless.
Great.
To spend it. So they're doing what they can with the families that qualify. So they are still doing some of that program, just not to this level.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Is it a public hearing? Is there anybody that would like to testify from the public? Seeing none, council?
President? Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing on the CDBG fiscal year 2015 substantial amendment.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to close the public hearing on CDBG 2015 amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, with that, we'll move to item eight D, which is the approval of the amendment for the amount of $13,200. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh.
In light of the staff's recommendation, I move we accept the CDBG fiscal year 2015 substantial amendment.
Second.
Motion to accept and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Palmer.
Given that there's people in the room, it's one day before I look like a completely cold-hearted person when I vote no on it, explain that, once again, when it comes to federal dollars, I always vote against accepting or spending any of them because they don't have any. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Clerk, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Eight E is a public hearing on H2016-0098, the Meridian Comprehensive Map and Text Amendment. I will open the public hearing. And Brian, are you going to do the presentation?
Mr. President, I am.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of city council, I'm here before you tonight to discuss a number of proposed changes to the future land use map and to the city's comprehensive plan. A little history for you, the previous comprehensive plan was reformatted, refreshed, and adopted on April 19th, 2011. Since that time, staff have done yearly reviews of policy statements in coordination with other departments, and those have resulted in several text amendments. This is the first city initiated map amendment since 2012 when we did the South Meridian map update. All other map amendments have been development-driven. Broadly speaking, this comp plan application includes three types of changes, all of which staff consider to be, for the most part, cleanup. The first type of changes are those to the text of the comprehensive plan. Most of these are minor updates to names, references, or to inform of status efforts, current efforts. The second type of changes are to the policy statements in the comprehensive plan, the goals, objectives, and action items. Again, these are considered to be mostly cleanup or status updates. Lastly, staff have proposed a number of future land use changes. Some of these are rather significant, at least in terms of their area on the map, but they are still cleanup in terms of what intent is. For example, a number of school and park sites have been changed to the civic land use from residential or commercial for consistency. Most of the older park and school sites in this city are also civic, so it makes sense just to be consistent in that regard. It's also important for land use analysis. I do not plan on going through all these changes. There's a lot. So I will go through a selection of them, and then if you have any specific questions, feel free to interject or ask me those at the end. This slide shows a few proposed changes to the text of the comprehensive plan. Green underlined text is new, red strike-through text is removed. The first item here is just to show the city has adopted a strategic plan since the comprehensive plan was last adopted, and that's important. So we're referencing it in the plan. The second item here is just to show an example of what a lot of these revisions are, which is minor, and to reflect changes in the last five years. In this case, the Meridian School District is now the West Ada School District. And so this change has been cascaded throughout This slide shows a few proposed changes to the policy statements in the comprehensive plan. The first item here is just a name change. The Architectural Standards Manual has already been implemented, and this is just for consistency. The second related item is an example of something that was added from the old design manual. When we were before you, for the Architectural Standards Manual, we told you that a number of the design manual elements weren't appropriate for the new Architectural Standards Manual, and that those would either be going to the UDC or to the comprehensive plan. This is an example of one where we've, actually, the only one where we pulled it into the comprehensive plan. The third item is just another example of a simple cleanup. And the fourth is just to show, in some cases, that the only change is who is responsible. In this case, the Finance Department now has the Arts and Culture Specialists instead of the mayor's office, so it's just handing out for the baton. This slide shows a few sample land use changes. The red outlined areas are those areas that have been removed from the area of city impact. The green areas are those areas that have been added to the area of city impact, and the blue areas represent changes to existing land uses. For the red areas, and in all cases, these were because Ada County has already processed a change that removed this from our area of city impact, or because an area that was removed made it difficult to service an area that was adjacent to it. The green, same thing, but the opposite for the green outlined areas. These are areas that the county has already processed a change to our area of city impact, and so we're just assigning the adjacent land use to that new area. Blue outlined areas, as I mentioned, are where there have been land use changes. And as I also mentioned, most of these are for schools, parks, things like that, where we're changing it to civic. There's a number of other examples, such as changing an area where there's a planned unit development that allowed, for example, office in a residential area. So we're just changing the office on that development to represent what is actually there. And in all cases, these changes reflect what is currently there, and there aren't any impacts to the existing property. We've also added a number of other elements to the map. We've changed some of the future sites for parks, fire. These have been in coordination with those departments. And we've also added that future State Highway 16 as a future road to this map. On September 1st, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this application for approval to you. Tonight, city staff are here asking for approval of this comp plan and land use map change. Moving forward, we will do our annual review of policy statements next year, and then we're also planning to do an update to the existing conditions report. With that, I'm happy to answer any specific questions you may have. Again, there's a lot of changes that I did not go over. So I'll stand for questions.
Counsel, any questions for Brian?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Brian, were there any comments, or I guess comments that came from the Planning, Zoning, when you presented this to them?
Council President Byrd, Councilmember Kevin, no, there weren't any changes, or there weren't any comments or recommended changes from Planning and Zoning Commission.
Very nice. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to testify on this subject? Seeing none, council, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President? I move that we close the public hearing on the 2016 City of Meridian Comp Plan Map and Text Amendment. I guess that's H-2016-0098.
Second.
Counsel, we've got a motion and a second to close the public hearing on H2016-0098. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh.
First, just to comment, my appreciation to staff, Brian. I know that this is a very short presentation, but there's a significant amount of work that goes into this on an annual basis. I appreciate you coming and bringing this presentation to us tonight. I move that we accept the amended, or the requested amendments to the Meridian Comp Plan Map and including the text amendments. That's H-2016-0098.
Second.
Counsel, we've got a motion and a second to approve the text amendment. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Okay, item eight F is a public hearing on H2016-0075. And is that you too, Josh? We'll turn it over to staff.
Very good, President, members of the council. This, as you said, is an application for Madden Village. It's an application for annexation and zoning, for preliminary plat, and for a conditional use permit. The site consists of approximately 10.4 acres of land, which is zoned RUT in Ada County, located at 2975 and 3001 North Meridian Road. To the north, we have the Parkview Christian Church and Spring Creek Assisted Living Facility, which are zoned LO. To the east, we have Meridian Road and single-family residential properties, which are zoned R8. To the south, we have single-family residential properties in the Salisbury Lane subdivision, which are zoned R4. And to the west, our single-family residential properties in the Parkway subdivision, which are also zoned R4. As you said, this is annexation, so there is no current history in the city of Meridian. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation for the piece is medium-density residential. The applicant has submitted an application for annexation and zoning of approximately 10.4 acres of land, 6.9 acres of which they're proposing an R8 zoning district, and 3.5 acres of which they're proposing an R15 zoning district, as well as a preliminary plat that consists of 29 single-family residential lots, 10 multifamily residential lots, and six common lots in the proposed R8 and R15 zoning districts. The conditional use permit for the multifamily development will consist of 48 dwelling units, which are eight four-plex structures and two eight-plex structures in the proposed R15 zoning district. You see here on the plat, the project is subject to the specific use standards we have for multifamily developments. There are two existing homes and associated outbuildings on the site that are proposed to remain as lots 16 and 31 of Block 1. All existing structures that are proposed to remain with the subdivision must comply with the setback standards of the R8 zoning district or be removed prior to the engineer's signature on the final plat. Additionally, staff recommends that the existing homes connect to city utilities and terminate their access to North Meridian Road with the first phase of development. Since the existing homes will no longer have access to North Meridian Road, the property owner will have to coordinate with the city's addressing specialist and obtain new street addresses from the adjacent local street, which is Elsinore Way. There is an existing outbuilding on Lot 31, Block 1, that will be located within the required street yard with the subdividing of the property. The UDC restricts detached accessory buildings from being located in this setback, and the applicant is requesting that the city council allow the accessory building to remain on the property in its current location. Staff recommends that the structure be removed with the development of the first phase unless approved to remain by city council. The applicant has provided, let me move through the slides here, the applicant has provided several photos of the existing, he's calling an RV garage, is located currently behind his home, but with the subdivision of the property and the realignment of the road, as you see in the plat, the structure is going to be located, currently is located right here, which will be considered then his front yard. Though the city has not yet received a formal phasing plan, the applicant has indicated that the multifamily portion of the site will be Phase 1, and the single-family portion will be Phase 2. Access is proposed for this site via one access from North Meridian Road to the proposed multifamily portion of the project, and via the extension of existing stub street from Salisbury Lane subdivision, which is North Springwater Street, for the single-family development. The Highway District is supportive of the access to North Meridian Road. and the applicant is seeking a council waiver to allow the access in accord with the UDC. If council does not approve the access to North Meridian Road, the applicant will have to redesign the site so that the proposed development can take access from Elsinore Way, which is a future local street. The applicant is proposing one common driveway in the project. The common driveway should comply with the standards listed in the UDC. Staff has reviewed the dimensions and the common drive for compliance with UDC standards. Unless limited by a significant geographic feature or separated by a minimum five-foot-wide landscape common area, all properties that have but a common driveway shall take access from that common driveway. The applicant is proposing a 25-foot-wide street buffer along North Meridian Road. Staff recommends that this buffer and the detached sidewalk be constructed with the first phase of development. The applicant has provided the required open space, or 10.4 acres. Excuse me, they're required to provide 1.04 acres, based on their acreage of 10.4 for the project. A total of 1.59 acres, or 15.3% of qualified open space is proposed, consisting of half a street buffer along North Meridian Road, the internal pathway that connects the multifamily portion of the site to the single-family portion, the micropath lot and internal common open space, which appear to comply with the requirements. And the applicant is proposing to share the open space between the multifamily and single-family developments. The applicant is providing one qualified side amenity, which is required, and they're providing a bocce ball court. As I said, internal pathways, a gazebo or plaza, community garden, and an internal grassy area that's at least 50 by 100 feet in size. The applicant, Mr. Steve Arnold, did provide notice that they are in agreement with staff's recommendations. The commission did recommend approval with conditions. Summary of the commissions are as follows. The applicant, Steve Arnold, Kyle Ensler, and Todd Tucker were in favor. Commenting were Mike Grossman, Todd Tucker, Jim Lewis, Clay Hitchcock, John Carver, Jeanette Drouillard, Joe Simonich, Nick Thomas, Wayne Brown, and Janice Steger. Written testimony was received by Ted Williams. I was the staff that presented the application. Bill Parsons also commented. Key issues of public testimony were the increased traffic onto Meridian Road from the proposed multifamily development, increased traffic through the surrounding subdivisions that provide access to the proposed single-family development, adequacy of the number of parking spaces proposed for the multifamily development, adequacy of the proposed amenities for the development. Should amenities be provided at all due to the proximity to Settlers Park? There have been issues with irrigation water on the subject property in the past, direct access to Eustick Road from the single-family development, the impact of road construction on the proposed entrance to the multifamily project. Key issues of discussion by the commission were the price point for both the rent for the multifamily and prices for the homes. Does the parking meet the UDC requirement for the multifamily portion? Transition from the surrounding R4 with the proposed R8 and R15 zoning districts, the pedestrian pathway to the northern property and its appropriateness, transition between the proposed R8 and R15 portions of the project, direct access to Meridian Road from the multifamily portion, appropriateness of the overall proposed density. One of the existing homes has an outbuilding that will not meet the setback requirements once the property is subdivided. The commission agreed with the staff that the building should be removed. Duration of the road construction at the intersection of Eustick and Meridian, and the impact that will have on the proposed entrance to the multifamily portion of the project. Commission did not change any of staff's recommendations, and the only outstanding issue for counsel is the proposed, the outbuilding that the applicant is proposing to keep that does not meet the UDC requirements. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions for staff this time?
All right now.
Is the applicant here? State your name and address, please.
Kyle Ensler, 3001 North Meridian Road in Meridian. Thank you, Mr. President and City Council, for your time this evening. Steve Arnold is the applicant. He's my land planner, and I got notice not long ago that he's in the hospital getting a gallbladder removed, so...
Oh, my.
Forgive me if I refer to my notes here a little bit. As Josh mentioned, the annexation and zoning preliminary plat and conditional use permit of approximately 10.4 acres is currently in the comprehensive plan for future land use, designates this site as medium-density residential with gross densities of three to eight dwelling units per acre. Our overall proposed density is 7.41 units per acre. And first of all, I'd just like to thank, acknowledge staff's help on this project. Both Josh and Bill have been very helpful and very responsive throughout this process, and I feel like we're able to work together to make changes that they recommended to align the city's vision with ours. And I have a lot of facts here on my notes and details that Steve was planning on sharing tonight, but in his absence, I'd like to kind of share with you what our vision was coming into this project. I'm the developer. I'm also the homeowner. I live in 3001 North Meridian Road with my family and three children. And a little selfishly, at first, we were looking to find a project in this area where we could create the kind of neighborhood that we would want to live in. We love this area, we go to church in this area. My girls play pal soccer, my wife and I play on a coed softball league. River Valley Elementary School last year, their library flooded. We organized a nonprofit event at Kleiner Park to raise funds for the library. So this is our community, we love it here, and we want to protect and improve that community. And I mention this just to say how involved we are in the community, and our intention coming into this was creating a plan or subdivision that both that we would be proud to live in, but also that would meet or exceed the city's goals and plans as well. And so if you look at the preliminary plan, at first glance, it's a little bit, it looks a little bit strange at first because of the placement of the two existing homes. It kind of made a little bit of a challenge for our planning because of how they initially situated those homes when they developed, when they first built them. And prior to us coming into this project, this property was under contract by another developer that had planned on demoing those two homes and really maximizing the development potential. And we looked at it, and of course, that was a consideration at first, but considering that, we, you know, we first looked at and estimated that that would add about 250 tons of trash to the landfill per building. And that also, by keeping these units, that we could create a natural buffer between, and a good progression between, from the single family to the multifamily. So if you look at, on, we're pretty close to Meridian and Eustick there. On the northeast, we have two major arterials. On the corner, the church is zoned LO, and the retirement home both zoned LO. And the multifamily we're proposing out on Meridian Road, we felt creates a, kind of a natural transitional use for more intense use, transitioning with the existing structures and more open space down to the residential density of 4.22. Also, in doing this, that required us to create more open space in between these houses and throughout the project. And as Josh mentioned, that we ended up at about 15% of open space, well above the 10% that was required. In designing the multifamily, some of the feedback that we got from the community initially was the concern of the traffic going out on Sedgwick. With Eustick already being the two private uses there on Eustick, our only access was onto, from North Springwater, that stub street, onto Sedgwick Drive. And some of the neighbors expressed concern of the traffic there. And so we really tried to push the multifamily towards Meridian Road for both the reason I already mentioned, but also to alleviate some of that traffic through the subdivision. ACHD has given us full access, both directions, onto Meridian Road. And we felt that it helped to alleviate the pressure onto Sedgwick. Our multifamily project that we've developed was designed by New Design. They have an office in Meridian. And we really, this is a pinwheel design. You may have seen this on other projects where the units, each unit is, has an upstairs and a downstairs. So these resemble more of a townhome look. The elevations and the heights are very similar to single-family. So we're really trying to provide a, more of an upscale multifamily project. Rents in this range estimated at 900 to 1,100 per unit. And as you can see, a lot of hips and valleys and colors that we felt would add to the existing community. I mentioned some of the concerns expressed by neighbors was traffic, especially through Sedgwick. We, Sedgwick currently has about 200 trips per day, and we would be adding about 290. ACHD's threshold for this road is 2,000. And our feedback from ACHD was, since it was so far below their threshold, that they would not request a traffic survey. However, we did conduct our own traffic analysis and determined that even at peak hour, we would have less than one trip every two minutes at maximum capacity. Meridian Road at peak is currently 14,000, but as you know, they are currently widening Meridian to five lanes, which will increase the threshold to approximately 33,000. And we would only be adding about 331 trips a day onto Meridian. And as I mentioned, ACHD has granted us full access on the Meridian Road in both directions. So hopefully, you can see, we've put a lot of thought into this community. We're not out-of-state developers trying to push through. We care about the neighborhood, we care about the neighbors' concerns, and we really feel like this will be a great addition to the community. We appreciate staff's support and approval. We've been agreeable to all of their recommendations. We're only proposing one variance to staff's recommendation, and that is the existing shop, which is currently to the west of 2975 that staff has recommended removing unless approved by council to remain. And Josh, would you mind pulling up a picture of that? So we didn't, unfortunately, we didn't have this picture in planning and zoning, and I feel like this better illustrates the situation. This is not, you can see a, kind of an old rundown little shed on the side of it. That's obviously not what we're talking about, that would remove. But this is, you know, we've estimated the replacement of this shop at about 120,000. It's 16 by 40. And it was built after the home, so as you can see, the lap siding is consistent with currently used building materials. I believe that if the colors matched the colors of the ACC for the subdivision, that we could also create a landscape buffer to the west, and it would be well incorporated into the subdivision. Also, the current tenant of this property intends to purchase this home, and so there would be considerable financial burden on him or loss if it was demolished. And of course, the demolition of that building would add about 25 tons of trash to landfill. So in our opinion, it makes sense that even though it's different from what the existing neighborhood would be, that since it is an existing structure, that there would be a variance granted in this case. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions for the applicant this time?
Mr. President?
Mr. Borton?
Can you, using this photo, can you orient us in relation to the proposed street? Is it running adjacent to the picture on the left? And how far is the, approximately the sidewalk and street from the door?
It's about 15 feet, so it's actually on the opposite side of the red door. The street is on the opposite side of that. So the shed that you see in the back there, that would remove. And it's about 15 feet, and so there'd be landscape in there, a sidewalk, and then the road.
Mr. President, do you have a photograph that shows the other side of this building? Facing the street?
No, I do not. It is the exact mirror of the one that you can see minus the door. So there's two windows, or there's one window and no door. Sorry. He is the tenant that's concerned about this, and I think he's going to speak as well. So he's corrected me, there's two windows on the opposite side.
And approximately 15 feet from the building structure to the sidewalk or the street?
I believe it's to the sidewalk. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Ms. Arnold?
So I noticed there's no play structure, you got almost 80 homes. And I'm assuming that's because of the proximity to the park.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me the exact distance on that?
It's less than a quarter of a mile. It's about two blocks. We walk there almost every day. So I don't know the exact distance, but my two-year-old walks to the playground there every day. Actually, that came up, Josh mentioned that, as one of the notes of whether or not amenities were even necessary here, given the proximity to the park. As you can see, we actually have five amenities, not a playground structure, but I believe the proposed amount of amenities was three. So we did want to keep consistent. Number one, we had more, 5% more open space, and so I wanted to find a way to utilize that, which, that lent itself to those additional amenities. But in terms of which amenities we chose, yes, ma'am, we certainly took into account Settlers Park.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Mrs. Mylum?
I also had a question, and I don't know if it was covered or not. There's so many items on here. But earlier, as I was reading, there was a, I don't know if this is for you or staff, but probably, I guess you could probably answer it. Is there was an issue regarding a management office? Has all of that been taken care of?
Yeah, what we discussed was creating, taking one of the units, and we can create a management office out of one of the units or a replacement of one of the units in the buildings. And so we're prepared to follow all staff's recommendations on that request.
Okay. So you're planning on maintaining ownership of all of these buildings?
Yes, initially, I am.
Initially?
Well, we, I want to keep at least two or three of the buildings. We are individually plating them. There's somebody here, I don't know if he's planning on speaking, but he's intending on purchasing one of the buildings. We're individually plating them so that, what I really like about the fourplexes is you can live in a unit and get a residential loan on a building and live in it as your home and rent out the other units. And so I have a couple people like that, that are wanting to both live here, that they want that to be their home, and then obviously, get some additional rental income as a result of those. So they're individually platted for that purpose, so that they can sell individually. But there is a governing HOA that maintains the exteriors and keeps up the property. We talked about that with staff as, and so, you know, obviously, my ability to keep all of them depends on, I'm not sure I could afford that financially, but I would love to. We do plan on keeping two or three of them, and so, you know, we are very vested in it.
Follow-up, Mr. President? But the main reason I ask, and so you have a management office, and regardless of ownership, would all apartments be under the same management and have the same rules? Because I know that situations where that isn't the case is where we have problems with law enforcement and...
Right.
Other kinds of issues.
Yeah. So the, yes, yes, ma'am, the HOA or the management office that manages the grounds, which is everything on the exteriors in the property, that is unified throughout the whole subdivision regardless of the owners of the property. Legally, we cannot force an owner to use that management company to manage the interiors of the buildings, just the exterior grounds, the maintenance to keep up, the neighborhood HOA.
How about the leasing?
Leasing is contracted for the first two years to a leasing company. And then beyond that, because I enter into that contract with them, beyond that, we cannot dictate the interior leasing. And then beyond that, because I enter into that contract with them, beyond that, we cannot dictate the interior leasing of the properties.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Okay, we had quite a few sign up. Jim Lewis is against and would like to testify if he'd come forward.
Mr. President, council members.
Name and address, please.
My name is Jim Lewis. My address is 101 West Sedgwick Drive. I reside in Salisbury Lane subdivision, just south of this project. I'd like all of you just to suppose for a minute that this was your neighborhood. Because the main arterial road, Meridian Road, as you're all aware, is undergoing expansion to five lanes. While they have started with the Eustick-Meridian Road intersection, that entire length all the way down to Cherry Lane is going to be under construction till 2019. So a fairly considerable amount of time. This project and the developer is requesting, obviously, to develop this property in two phases. But, so we're going to have existing construction vehicles, you know, on that road. And then the ones for developing this project, you know, accessing the multifamily off Meridian Road, and then eventually punching through my subdivision to do the other phase for the single-family residential. Salisbury Lane has about 40 residences currently. You know, once, so it's, first of all, we're going to have construction chaos with these ongoing projects kind of overlaying with the ACHD project. Secondly, once it is completed, then we're going to have, you know, Sedgwick, West Sedgwick Drive, instead of being accessed for 40 resident, 40 houses out to Meridian Road, it's going to be 69. And then what Mr. Ensler did not direct to you is the, because the current access to the two residential houses is adjacent to where ACHD is going to do a U-turn, a proposed U-turn as part of their proposal, the driveway that is going to be accessed for the multifamily is going to be 140 feet closer to Sedgwick Drive. And contrary to Mr. Ensler's assertions, ACHD is only providing temporary full access, which means ACHD is reserving the right to make that, based on traffic patterns in the future, right in, right out. In which case, they would dump traffic back onto my driveway. I mean, back onto Sedgwick Drive. And I reside in the first cul-de-sac, so those people are going to do U-turns to turn left if they need to head north. This project is the wrong project. The multifamily, it's not an appropriate place. I know that the city of Meridian is trying to develop multifamily, and I'm responsive to that. I don't think this is the right area. I think the level of congestion is going to be much more significant than what is initially conceived of, both by ACHD and the city of Meridian. So I urge you to reject this project accordingly. Send him, send Mr. Ensler back to the drawing board. You know, it's, we're not saying that, don't develop this project, but it's, as currently conceived, it's not appropriate for the area. Thank you for your time.
Any questions?
Mr. President. So what do you think is inappropriate about this, just the multifamily portion?
Well, I, I think that the, having access to the Stub Street, having 29 residences, those are, has currently conceived, the lot sizes are considerably smaller than the adjoining lot sizes on Salisbury Lane. So I think that's a lot of congestion. And it's accessing Sedgwick Drive about halfway up, which means if you're on the eastern part of West Sedgwick Drive, that, that little portion is going to be, have a considerable amount of traffic. I think the number of, I think the number of units for having multifamily there is excessive. And I think the number of single-family residences could be reduced from the, from the, from the current 27 proposed, in addition to the two residences that are going to remain.
Mr. President. Sorry, not to be redundant, but, so you're against the Meridian Road access, and you're against them using Salisbury Lane. Something is going to, or Sedgwick, sorry, yes. I mean, something is going to develop here. How would you recommend that they access?
Well, I think that it could easily be, could be zoned for, you know, something akin to light industrial or, you know, that whole section of Meridian Road, all the way, you know, has, has other different, you know, business uses or even a commercial lot there, something I think would be more appropriate. It's just, or, you know, something akin to an office complex. There was a senior care center just, just north of there. What would be wrong with having, you know, kind of a low-grade commercial or business office complex there? That would seem to be more appropriate and a lot less traffic being dumped out onto Meridian Road.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather Shibley, she's for, but she didn't want to testify. Benjamin Shibley was for, but did not want to testify. John Williams is against and would like to testify.
Hi, I'm John Williams, 126 West Cedric Drive. And I get kind of nervous. I'm not really good at public speaking, so you guys will have to.
Neither are we, don't worry about it.
We are either.
So Mr. Ensler talked about the transition from the multifamily to the single-family home. And where my lot is, there's no transition. There's just multifamily two stories above my backyard. Which I understand that, you know, when you're developing, there could be a single-family house that's two stories high too. But the difference is, is those people have stake in the game. When you put multifamily housing or basically the equivalent of an apartment complex, these people have no long-term stake in the game of developing the area, making sure that they're doing the things that are appropriate and will help the community be peaceful and flourish. And it's all, it's about home values too, property values. I'm concerned about mine lowering because of the multifamily housing. And that includes the noise that comes with it. They're talking about the burden of extra trash. I mean, but all these multifamily housing units right there, and there's trash to go into my, into the landfill that follows. The traffic forcing it right in there between Sedgwick and Eustick? I mean, that just seems excessive to me already. I mean, it's a challenge to even get out of the neighborhood and go north during, whether it's in the morning or in the afternoon, peak traffic hours. It's a challenge for me to even take a left into my neighborhood off of Sedgwick. I mean, the traffic is stoplight to stoplight. And I understand they're doing the road widening project. But I don't see that really helping more multif, when you put multifamily housing in there, I don't see like a couple extra roads really benefiting that at all, or making it easier or less impactful. Again, please bear with me. My brain's going a thousand miles a minute here. The dumpsters, multifamily housing, I'm concerned about possible smells from open-air dumpsters. You know, goes along with that. I certainly, you know, my dream wasn't to purchase my house and then have apartments go up behind it. I don't know a lot of people who say, you know what? My perfect scenario is to buy a house and then make sure and build plenty of apartments around it, unless, you know, they like strange company. And I don't think that the other people living on Sedgwick with their backs to that multifamily housing or near the vicinity of it, you know, have that idea either. We want, I feel that if you develop it and you put some single-family housing there, I think that's perfect. I think it adds to the existing neighborhood. I think that the burden of traffic is, would be fine with that versus the multifamily housing. And that was my time limit, right? Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. President, I do have a question.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Mr. Williams, how many of your, you and, I guess you and your neighbors', rear of your homes would face this multifamily development?
From the backyard.
Uh huh. So is it, we're talking about, is it one, is it three, is it 10? I mean, how, how many of the homes in your neighborhood would back up against the multifamily?
I think it's, it's two right now.
Two?
But then you start also taking to, to account the view that we have of the mountains, that these things would block. I mean, we're worried about putting up trees to block the view of Meridian Road, but, you know, I have these multifamily dwellings going up to block the view of the mountains that I have right now currently. You know, two houses matter, right? Just as much as, as the other ones that have, you know, a single-family house backing up to it. Anybody else?
Thank you. Don Farley, he is neutral, but.
Well, hi, my name is Don Farley, and I live at 2683 North Richter Road. And we're right around the corner from Sedgwick, by the way. As a matter of fact, right at the corner of Sedgwick and Richter is where my house is. So I don't know where I am. I have some, some problems that I thought we'd try to knock them out tonight. One of the things is multifamily dwellings, multi-house, multifamily dwellings with no age discrimination at all, opens up to more law enforcement problems there in a multifamily dwelling area. I've seen it happen time and time and time again. Every place I've ever seen multifamily houses go in, there's been an increase in that. The other thing is, we're talking about traffic. Right now, the traffic backs up down to, all the way down, almost to Albertson's down there. In fact, I've, I've seen it down there a couple times. That's a lot of traffic. To try to think you're going to move all that, with that traffic with, adding two lanes, I don't think we're being really realistic. We've got a huge intersection that's going to be there for the Eustick and Meridian. And the minute that that starts going into construction and gets really into it, this Eustick is going to be pretty well closed, for any, for any sense and purposes. If that happens, I'm, I'm a member of a church that's there. And that church is going to lose people coming to church time and time again. And it's not going to be an easy one-month situation. It should be a long-term situation. I appreciate the opportunity that the people have to develop the property. And I certainly would not be one, would want to stand in this way. I do have a problem, and the problems are, as I mentioned. And I think we need to try to come up with some other way to solve that problem for the people who own it. The other thing is, I was told by the ADA, city council, I don't know, it's under the council. Anyway, it's a construction that's already set up to go on Eustick. The church has a single entrance and exit right now. And if we want to go down to about 100 feet further and put another one in, another driveway, we're going to make it really advantageous for the city. Because all we have to do is put the little place up there, let's the people get in and out. I'm proposing that we make the one that's on the east side of the church, that exit, that's actually on the middle of the church, but that exit would be a right turn only. When you get down to the other end of it, down to the west end, you make it a left turn only. Why? Because the time that it takes for a car to start at the red light change at Eustick, Hamlet, and Meridian, all the way down to where we're going to make our turns from the left, I could turn five, six cars that would not be jammed up because it's, it's just take care of a lot of the problems that I see that will happen. If it doesn't cost the city anything, we'll take care of it. If it doesn't cost the city anything, but the city's sure on line, it says, we approve this. We'll put it in after the road is laid, so it'll blend perfectly into the road. So basically, I'd like to, think a little bit more about what we can do to take care of the situation on Cedric and Road for this gentleman.
Or would you summarize up, please?
I'm trying to. Basically, with that situation, I'm concerned about the fact that it's a multiple, multi-occupancy dwellings. And I'm concerned about traffic. I'm concerned about what we're going to have coming in for the people to be faced with on a regular basis. We have rentals right behind our house right now. On 4th of July, you might as well forget it. We had to chase two dogs down the street, and they got out. And that's, those are apartments back there. We don't have that wherever you live. The other thing is, if that gives you back, basically enough information to summarize that. Basically, the other side of it is, we have a transportation problem in making our turns in and out of the church. I'd like to have the city look at that. Because we just had a task on, and they said, no, we don't want to do that. I said, who doesn't want to do that? Well, they told me that it was ADA that didn't want to do it, that it all of a sudden doesn't want to be. The city told them that they didn't want to do it. And I don't believe that's true. Because all I have to do is look at it, and it makes sense.
Sir.
It makes good sense.
Sir, a lot of, we can do some recommendations on stuff like that, but it has to come through ACHD. It's the ones that determine the roads and the entrances and the exits.
Mr. President, oh, sorry, sorry. Sir, we have no jurisdiction over the roadways. Ada County Highway District is the one that makes those decisions. We do not make roadway decisions.
Okay.
At all.
I wonder why I was told this.
The only reason that we have a decision on this particular one is because they already, they did approve it for the, for the Meridian Road access. But we don't have, we, we have nothing over that, no decision-making.
The driveway area.
For the drive, for the, yeah. If it, if it goes out onto a road, like Eustick Road, we're not the decision-making body for that. Ada County Highway District is, are the people that you need to speak with.
We're also looking at it really, we're asking about being able to get our people to church.
Thank you.
Totally understandable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lean Lewis is for. Did not want to testify. Todd Tucker is for, and yes, would like to testify.
Thank you, council president and council. My name's Todd Tucker. I live at 2857 North Fairland Avenue here in Meridian, which is just about a half a mile to the, to the west of this in the Crossfield subdivision. So just to preface this, I, I do work as a city planner for City of Boise and have for, for quite some time now. And I'm in full support of this project. I think this is exactly what we need here in Meridian, especially at this, in this location. It's at the, near, it's on an arterial road and very clear, or close to the intersection of another arterial road, very close to a regional park, to commercial services. This is exactly where we need multifamily development, where there is access and where there is close proximity to, to regional uses for these, for these, these tenants. I was going to go into the design a little bit, but Mr. Ensler covered that pretty good. I just think it's a well-designed project. The fourplexes with the pinwheel design, we see them quite a bit. It's nice because it does put a door on every side, and it puts eyes on the street with their close proximity to, to Meridian Road. I'd like to see them a little bit closer to the road, but I understand the setback that the city of Meridian has there on Meridian Road. I think there's good pedestrian connectivity. I think there's a good connection between the multifamily and the single-family portion of this project. This is a good mixed-use project between multifamily and single-family. And I think mixing those, those uses of multifamily and, and single-family makes for good community. Like I said, I live in the Crossfield subdivision, which is, has single-family development, homes. homes in it, it also has multifamily homes in it. I always tell a story of when I came home one day and they started building the apartments in Crossfield, and I had to have the same discussion with my wife that I do every day with people that come into City Hall, that know, our property values aren't going to be diminished, crime is not going to rise, our neighborhood is not going to go to pot just because there's some multifamily. It makes for good community to mix, to mix those uses. The density is, is, is not very high, it's, it's under eight units per acre. In, in Boise City, we'd consider this low-density residential, not medium-density residential. I think that's just about it. You know, one of the, the main reasons that I support this project is the, the need for transit in the area. I know it's going to be quite a while down, down the road, but if we don't get density in, in these areas, specifically on arterial roadways, we're never going to get transit. I want to be able to, to ride the bus to work and not have to drive so far. And, and the way that that is driven is through, through density. When there's more density in areas, then that's when transit's going to come. I know it's going to be a while, but still, if we don't get it now, it'll never come. So, that's the main reason why I'm supporting this project is, is the need for, for transit in this area, and I think this is going to, to help lead to that.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Tucker?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Myler.
Are you the one that was purchasing one of the units?
No, that's not me.
Oh, okay. So you don't have any personal interest in this?
I do not, nope.
All right, just a second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Grossman is neutral and would like to testify.
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. I'm also rookie at this, my first attempt was...
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, see what I mean. Mike Grossman, 3056 Northwest Third, Meridian, Idaho. I did have my initiation in front of planning zoning, so I'll try not to mess this up too much. Three of the things that have been addressed, I have some notes and I'll try not to go past my limit here, but three of the things that have been brought up that I'd like to clarify on the outbuilding situation, that was somewhat discouraged by staff because no one else in that single level area is going to be able to have an outbuilding. So that's the only thing I would like to address about that. The multifamily is just a real tough situation. It's just not right situation. And I'm sure if you ask the police officers and the people that have to govern that, would they like to contact 10 people if it was against, under one management roof? Then maybe it's different. But if you have 10 units, and I own one, and Joe owns one, and da-da-da-da-da, it's, it's an, it's just, it's a terrible situation. The transit, and I don't want to be disrespectful, but the transit subject that was just brought up is, I think, somewhat very invalid. You know, City of Boise can't even get that under a situation, or the whole valley, let alone one little area in Meridians make transit more appealing. So, I would like to say on the other notes, planning and zoning, when we went before them, I didn't quite, maybe in the rookie, understand how the two out of the five voiced their opinions, and I don't know if you have those opinions, but they voiced opinions that they felt very uncomfortable with this project. And they voiced it, both of them separately. And then, I don't know if it was peer pressure or what, all of a sudden, they went ahead and voted to pass it. So there's some issues here. One of the issues is, sorry, and I kind of out of order here, let me look here. I think it will somewhat, not the same, I'm not so much against a single level, although I would have liked to seen some pictures from this developer as to the quality of his homes and that. I think it could bring down the property values, because the majority of the area, you have to understand, and if you don't live over there, I know it's probably hard to visualize, but the majority of the area over there is R4. So we want to go from an R4 density to an R15 density, and you, oh yeah, well, we come up with an average of R7. Now, okay, that, that's really impressive and it doesn't mean a lot to me. So, I would like, my suggestion is, the multifamily area, I would rather it be zoned commercial, like it is right down the street. Less traffic, less trips, and also the facts that, I want you to understand that you're getting on ACHD, and we know they never make mistakes, but that road survey is from 2010. Now, nothing's happened since 2010 in Meridian, Idaho. Oh, by the way, they're taking houses out at my intersection. So, I got two more quick things if you'll let me, I'm sorry. The, the other concern I have about the multi, if you move forward, it wants to be the first phase. I'm a little, little nervous that, okay, we build the first phase, and then all of a sudden, eh, we really don't want to do singles. So let's try to rezone it for more multis, or let's leave town, or whatever. So, if you're going to zone it, rezone it for all single level, it helps on the traffic and the poor people at Sedgwick, if any of you go by down Meridian Road north to Eustick, there's a sub, apartment building called Heron Village. ACHD evidently approved that, or it wouldn't have happened. If you go by that now, look at the street, Blue Heron, and that street has become a commercial parking lot for that development. And that's what's going to happen to Sedgwick, and I know everybody says, oh, it'll never happen, but it will happen because there's not enough places for people to visit those multiplexes. I appreciate you letting me go over.
Summarize up.
Any questions?
Any questions, Randy? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Nick Thomas is for, and he would like to testify.
Nick Thomas, I reside at 2975 North Meridian Road, the second home in question here. Mr. President, Council, I do have personal interest in this project. I think Mr. Ensler, even though I have not, I have not known him for a very long time, I know he has a good interest in our community and in the project itself. Personally, I have been in the home building industry for over 15 years, I work for a local home builder. I understand and appreciate, growing up on a farm, on a dairy farm, my grandfather's farm was just a stone's throw to the northwest of this, that is now houses. I understand what happens with urban sprawl and with growth, but that is life. So I've come to embrace it, so why not be a part of it? I appreciate that Mr. Ensler is maintaining the integrity of what's existing and not being wasteful. There are a few reputable builders in town that try to maintain this in, in keeping existing structures and, as, as a part of the community. My only request, my biggest request, the RV garage is a nice building, it would be impossible to duplicate. I understand and appreciate concerns that others in the community do not have one, but in 20 years, if I plan to move to south where it's warm, they're more than welcome to buy the property from me. So, the opportunity will be there. As Mr. Ensler stated, the, the cost of this structure, to demolish it, not only due to waste, but the value of the property and the community would decrease. I would just request that we consider, that you as a council, Mr. President, consider deeply the waste that would be taken into effect if it's demolished. As an architectural designer, I have great appreciation for structures and making sure they look good. Even though the building is not very old, according to CCNRs and ACC approval, I have plans to dress it up and make it look as an integral part of the community. Thank you.
Any questions? Kyle Jones is for. Anyone testify? Craig Chively is for, but did not want to testify. This is a public hearing, is there anybody that would like to testify? Come forward.
Thank you, I'm Shane Haas, I live at 115 West Sedgwick. I don't have a whole lot to say, I think Mr. Tucker said it best. I do think, you know, living on Sedgwick, I think this is a perfect spot for multifamily housing, as well as to increase the subdivision. My primary reasons for that is, I work at St. Al's as a physician assistant, and I have a lot of school debt from that. And I would like to be able to afford a nice place to live where I'm at now, and I could buy a house and I could take on more debt, but I would rather not. And I just want to be smart with my money and with my family, I have two young kids. And I think this provides an opportunity for people who are fiscally responsible to live in a great area next to what I think is the crown jewel of Meridian, which is Suders Park. So for me personally, I think this is a great opportunity to, to afford a house. And they say, you know, they keep referring to renters and renters and renters, and, you know, we can't classify everybody the same, there are some great renters. I've been a renter for a long time, all through school, and I took care of my properties, and I think renters loved me and, you know, tried to keep me around when, you know, when I thought about moving on. And so, I don't think renters are a bad thing. And I honestly think if you drive down Sedgwick Road, there's some houses that could use an HOA that kept up their property, as well as the HOA will keep up these multi-level housing. I think the exterior will be more beautiful than some of those houses on Sedgwick. So I don't think it's a concern of looks. I understand the traffic burden, and I think, you know, that's not going to be as severe as some people think. But me personally, I think this is a great place for multi-level housing, and I think it will turn out to be a good thing for the community. And I, I wish that we would stop classifying all renters as, you know, pedophile sex offenders or whatever we think they are, because they're not. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. President, not really a question, but my comment. I, I'm a landlord.
Sure.
So, I, I have some amazing renters, so just, so you know, we don't...
Yes.
Sit up here and, and judge and think poorly of, of...
Of course, yeah, yeah, thank you.
So, I have some that I really try not to let go.
Yeah. So you know, renters aren't necessarily a bad thing.
Absolutely.
So.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Public hearing, anybody else would like to testify? If not, Kyle, you got the last word.
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. Just a couple points that were brought up by members of the community that I wanted to address. In terms of multifamily backing up to housing, part of the reason that we pushed as far as we could the multifamily to the front was to avoid that. So, there's actually one, only one residence, 102, that has, and it's not even a direct, but has a partial, partially a buts to the multifamily. The heights, the elevations for the subdivision are 35 feet, our elevations are 28. So, again, we took that into consideration when planning these, and the fact that the pinwheel design, I think, for those that don't understand multifamily, I, I may have not explained that well. The way it works is there's a center point, and there's a building on each corner, so there's a, a door on each side of the house, which in this case, and, and there's an upstairs and a downstairs, so there's not a balcony for the fourplex that backs up to the one single family. It's no different than having a single family home behind you. In fact, it's actually, it's actually less obtrusive because it's not the same height, there's no balcony looking down into your yard, there's just one front door on that side. In terms of the dumpsters, of course, we plan those to be as far away from the single family as we can. One thing that was brought up, that the church to the north of the property contacted us and asked us for connectivity to the church, and in talking to Josh and Bill, we thought that that was a great idea to, again, incorporate that community feel. So we had, we do, based on that request, have created a pedestrian path and connectivity to the church lot as well. In terms of parking, two units, our two parking stalls per unit is required, which is a total of 96 parking stalls, we have 101. And of course, based on City of Meridian requirements, there'll be a significant landscape buffer between Meridian Road and the complex, as well as a fence. Lastly, I don't feel like I, I properly addressed the concern that was brought up in terms of who's managing these properties. As, as I stated, there's, very, very similar to a, a single-family neighborhood, you know, an HOA can govern the entire neighborhood, and if they have strict HOA guidelines and a community that cares about it, they can maintain the exteriors and the look of the neighborhood and the feel of the neighborhood, but they don't have a right to govern who's in the house. And I think Shane coming up here speaking is a great example of the potential of what we have with individually parceling these properties, where you have somebody like that who is treating this as both his primary residence and also eventually will be managing the rest of the units. And I think that that provides a great mix of, of community, and I think it'll provide for a great product, and I don't see any additional issues with that. But I think that covers all the additional remarks. Any other questions?
Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Myler.
Regarding your, your management, I guess what I had in mind was, a lot of these complexes with multiple fourplexes that are individually owned...
Uh huh.
Do have an authority to, for leasing terms, so that their, the rents are the same, the screening is the same, so that one isn't sold to some out-of-state owner who doesn't really care and just, you know, takes an application over the phone or whatever, and the point is to have uniformity and make sure that everybody in that whole neighborhood remains in a, a good space, in a safe place.
Yeah. Yes, I, and, and to the extent that we can legally do that, of course, that's our intention. We've already talked to a management company, a good management company in town, have them on board, and, you know, like I said, I, I plan on owning them. So just from an investor standpoint as well, I, I want to maintain the integrity of these buildings and, and the community as well. So to the extent that we can legally do that, we will do everything we can to keep that conformity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Mr. President?
Questions we need? Mr. Kavner?
I got a couple of questions for Justin, if he's...
Okay, we'll ask Mr. Justin up here.
He's in the audience, so I might as well.
He was sitting on the wrong side, I didn't see him.
That's right. I caught him.
Mr. President, sorry about that, I should have sat in my normal spot.
Yes.
For the record, Justin Lucas, representing the Ada County Highway District, business address is 3775 Adam Street in Garden City, Idaho.
All right, Mr. President, Justin, one of the members of the public that testified talked about an ACHD U-turn project. I was hoping you could maybe provide us with a little more context about that proposed project, where it would be, what it would entail. I think in light of this development, it, it's very pertinent.
Certainly, Mr. President, members of the council, as you're aware, the Eustick and Meridian intersection is currently under construction. They're doing a lot of the utility work and other things out there right now. In association with that project, we're rebuilding and widening the sections of Eustick between Locust Grove and Meridian, and Meridian and Linder. So it's a two-mile project with an intersection in between. Also, in short order, we plan to widen Meridian Road between Fairview Cherry and this new intersection. That'll be completed by 2019, I think that was already stated. So as part of that intersection project, and in the ACHD staff report, I believe there is an exhibit, if, if you would like to look at that, if you can access that in your packet. When you head south on Meridian Road... When you head south on Meridian Road, there will be a U-turn opportunity, which is like a protected U-turn. There'll be a kind of a little median area where you can go in and turn around so you could head northbound on Meridian Road. And I believe it's on page, let's see here. Page seven of the ACHD staff report kind of indicates how that is laid out. And the issue with that was that the applicant's proposed driveway was basically directly adjacent to this U-turn pocket. So that would prohibit them from getting any left-out access onto Meridian Road. And that's why in the staff report, it recommends moving that driveway location for the multifamily section of the development further south. It recommends about 140 feet south. I still believe that's over, it's about 346 feet north of the Sedgwick Drive access though. So there's still about a football field between the two, the driveway and the existing Sedgwick Drive. And look at this. We've got it up here in front of us. And we're going to go down page, that right there. There you go. Thank you very much. So you can see the proposed driveway, the U-turn access, the project terminus. And so the, this, the applicant was proposing to use this kind of existing location for the driveway, and ACHD asked them to move it down. That is not an exact location where I just drew that, but that is an indication of the further south. Does that help clarify that a little bit? I can certainly stand for any other questions.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Justin, a couple of other questions. Ridge Haven Way, which is, I guess, maybe it's about a quarter of a mile west of, I guess, the adjacent homeowners association off of Sedgwick. Do you know, is, and maybe staff can pull it up on a map so that you can see it. I just was curious if you knew what the future plans were for that particular road? If it's slated to connect out to Eustick? Or if it's set to terminate where it is?
Ridge Haven Way.
Haven Way. So if you follow Sedgwick all the way to the end, I believe that would probably be it, if my eyes are
So certainly, if you just zoom out a little bit, Josh. You know, connectivity in this area, I would call it a challenge for the residents of Indian Rocks, Claire, Sedgwick. This developed portion of Meridian has developed, you know, all the way through, about a half-mile deep, but has no way else out except back onto Meridian Road.
Right.
Now, in the future, there will certainly be opportunities to access Eustick from this area. One of those opportunities is going to happen at some point through this connection here, because you'll have Third Street. Venable Lane at some point in the future. Whether it's Venable or some other adjacent access point, the idea is to have a connectivity up there at the half-mile. And it's very likely that you could see another connection point onto Eustick Road at some point in the future. All of that would be determined through the development process and the plating process. You would have an opportunity to see how that plays out. And certainly, connectivity in and through this area is critical in the future.
Mr. President, one last question.
Mr. Cavanagh.
So Justin, I remember as a kid growing up in my neighborhood, the street ended and there was this big yellow and orange, like fence with a sign that said, "This road to be extended in the future."
Sure.
And that sign sat in my neighborhood for the whole time that I lived there as a kid. My question is, do those signs still exist? And when I see it at Sedgwick and it's like Springwater, which is one more street, correct where the arrow is. On streets like that, does ACHD place that same type of a fence and a sign that says, "This road to be"? Oh, well, there's an easy way to find the answer to that.
Josh is hitting home runs tonight. This is great.
He has spent a thousand.
I got to get him on the payroll. This is
Josh is on the ball.
I know our parks department's here, but apparently we've got some more court space available.
Yeah. Mr. President, Councilman Cavanagh, as you can see, there is that barricade that's placed there. I think it's a relatively standard ACHD requirement that the barricade goes up and the sign goes up that says, "This road will be extended in the future." Now, how long that sign might last and how long that barricade may be there, ACHD has no policing policy related to that. And so it's very likely that those signs go up. I can almost guarantee they go up when the subdivision's completed. How long they stay is a completely different situation.
Great.
Thank you. Any other questions for Justin?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Milam.
This may have already been answered, but Justin, from the access point for this project, what is the distance to Eustick?
That is a good question, Mr. President, Councilman Milam. I'm looking here in my report to see if I have a distance from Eustick on that driveway. Eustick, Meridian intersection.
Existing one.
Existing one is like 640 feet.
Yeah, I believe the existing one is over 600 feet.
Yes.
Existing one.
And then the proposed driveway, which is required to be moved, would be an additional 140 feet south. So you're looking
750 feet.
Yes, yes.
Where it's supposed to be. Okay.
Exactly. And thank you for pointing that out. There was no, there was no modification to ACHD standard policy as part of this application.
Thank you, Justin.
Any other questions for Justin? Again, thank you very much, Justin.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, any other questions or answers we need while the public hearing is open?
Mr. President.
Mr. Borden.
Is, are the two existing homes that are remaining to be included into, with CCNRs, with the rest of the single family?
Correct. Typically, we don't, staff doesn't typically have that as a requirement, that there'd be an HOA, but that's just typically how the developers do things. With a subdivision like this, I would imagine that that's what they would want to do, is to have them included in the existing, I mean, as far as, as far as an HOA goes, it seems like that's what they would want to do as opposed to removing two homes from a development. But that's a question for the applicant, for sure.
And, Mr. President, the reason I ask is, and the applicant might comment on this, is the utilization of that might permit some landscaping requirements if the shed were to remain adjacent to the public street, and there's going to be a commitment to landscape it in some fashion, if it were to remain, that CCNRs would enable the residential new homeowners to ensure that continues.
Mr. Borden, would you like the applicant to come forward?
I think he wants to.
Kyle, would you come forward, please?
Yeah, thanks.
Long ways to come for a yes, but, yes, sir. We, it is actually in the report that we talk about the HOA for the residential as well as the multifamily and the fact that the two residential existing homes will be incorporated into that and a part of that HOA, which is why I was making the comment about the existing lap siding and making it cohesive with the architectural control standards for that subdivision.
Okay.
So, yes, sir.
Mr. President.
Mr. Borden.
I thought you had made comment to some, I don't know if there's a landscaping commitment. Do you have ideas on what you would intend, should that remain? What I, and the reason I ask is, the minutes from planning and zoning don't really reflect a real robust discussion about the shed. The hearing was closed, and then there's discussion about it should be removed because it's noncompliant with code. But it didn't seem like there was, maybe because the picture wasn't available, but there wasn't a lot of discussion on, if it were to remain, what would you anticipate being the best way to ensure landscaping is maintained?
Yes, sir. So that side, if we look at that picture again, you know, I think that it's not, this isn't something that's a complete ice or that we're trying to hide completely. I think just following the standard guidelines of the, what we're proposing to landscape throughout the subdivision, just following that same thing along the side of that will provide enough of a buffer. But we'd certainly be open to staff's recommendations on, you know, what we should do there to make it appease the city.
Okay.
You know, I personally, part of, part of the reason it doesn't fall within the setback is because of where the street is, they're calling that the front of the house. Well, there's still, there's still a front of the house where you walk to the front of the house. It's just being called the front of the house because of how it's situated a little bit oddly. And so that's, your access, the driveway access actually, and if we pull up a different plan, it actually curves in front of that around to the front of, what I would consider the front of the house. So I don't think that this will be a whole lot different than, say, the lot to the west and, you know, driving in, looking at the side of their house, which backs up to the community gardens there to the east. It's not, it's not going to be a whole lot different than viewing that side of the property. And so I think that in that case, you know, there'd be no landscape requirements for them to, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? In front of their side. So I think anything that we do is going to be additional. I think even if you didn't do anything, I don't think it would look weird or awkward. I think it would still blend in the community. But I, I'm certainly prepared to do more than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant while they're cutting up here? Thank you, again, Kyle.
Thank you.
Mr. President, quickly, if I may. So in discussing this with staff and with legal, staff's recommendation, as you see in the staff report, is that that be removed. Having said that, it doesn't meet the UDC. And because this is annexation, typically, we're a little bit more strict as far as staff goes with making sure that anything coming into the city meets current code. The mechanism, and I'm not sure there, the difficulty with this is the applicant had mentioned a variance to allow the outbuilding to remain. That's not really a mechanism that we, A, that the applicant has applied for, and B, that the findings that staff has to make is that there's a, there's a harm, there's a hardship with the application. In this case, it's a self-inflicted hardship because they're designing the project so that this building that's existing doesn't meet the standards of the UDC. Likely, there's a way to design this so that there's not an issue in keeping the building. But the way that they've done it means that it doesn't meet standards. He mentioned a lot to the west. And depending on how these proposed home would be designed, this would still be the front yard setback, even if the home faced east, if that makes sense. And then this would still be the side yard setback. So they would not be allowed to put a building out here, even if technically it's the side of their home. So I'm sure you all understood that, but I just wanted to make sure you understood staff's kind of thought process behind requesting that that be removed.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, councilmembers, just maybe to add that a little bit. The issue with the shed is not aesthetics. I think it's fine-looking. It's where it would be located, in the front of the yard, is not, as Josh said, meets code. We don't have a variance application, as Josh said, that, you know, let's fast-forward on this a little bit and not hold out false hope. Don't know how a hardship could be demonstrated. So we just want that to clarify that. That's really the reason why staff and P&amp;Z recommended that that building be removed. Perhaps there is a cure so that this structure could end up not being in the front yard. That would require going back to the drawing board on design.
Mr. President.
Mr. Borden.
So it's, that makes it sound like we don't have the authority with what's in front of us because there's no variance application to grant the request, even if we want to do.
Mr. President, Councilmember Borden, perhaps Mr. Neri wants to weigh in, but I don't believe that you do have the authority.
I don't think we do.
Mr. President, members of the council, Councilmember Borden, you know, we talked about this, and Mr. Chatterton and Josh are right, that variance doesn't apply. The state code is very specific about what variances can be done. And they are required to be a hardship that is based on the topography of the property, not because it's expensive and not because it's inconvenient. So that's, that's the problem is, as Bruce said, fast-forward, even under the variance, there is no logical, reasonable way you can make that finding because they've designed it this way. It's unfortunate Mr. Arnold isn't here because my assumption is he's the designer. And I don't know if he looked at variations of this property and other options of how it could be laid out and not to then put this building in the front yard adjacent to the street, which we don't allow anyone else to do. No, and we've had many occasions over the years that people have built structures of this type in their front or side yard setbacks, and we have required they be removed after they've been built. So it isn't unusual for us to run into this problem. But they have come and asked, and they've asked this council to grant a variance because they didn't realize they built it in the wrong place. They didn't realize that it was too close or it was in the front yard setback because, again, it isn't the location of the house, of the front door. It's the location of the property in relation to the street. And each time, the council has denied it because, again, it's the hardship they've created, not the hardship that the land's created. And the statute is crystal clear on that.
Mr. President.
Mr. Borden.
A procedural question, then. If that's the case, this would be something that I would have anticipated would be discussed and presented to the applicant well before P&amp;Z, that if there's, I didn't see that, I didn't, maybe I missed it.
There's a staff condition that they remove the outbuilding because it doesn't meet the UDC standard. And they were aware of that at the pre-application meeting.
Not necessarily that, but the, the only path were to go forward is you have to have a parallel variance application. Whether or not it would be granted, they could at least always make an application to at least get it before us. Whether the findings could be made is another question. But to then give us the authority to even grant the request. So procedurally, it sounds like with what's before us, we couldn't grant it if we wanted to, when it would necessitate that application to come along with this. And if that's the case, I hope the applicant was told that.
Well, Mr. President, Councilmember Borden, we always counsel applicants on ways to achieve what they want to, even if perhaps staff isn't in agreement with that. In this case, that would not have been something we would have counseled because we didn't see a success at the end of the road for them. I mean, that would have been perhaps laying out a false hope. I mean, we could have done a variance application. Perhaps that should have been done. It, you would be able to, on this application, condition, I believe, Josh and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, condition that either they apply for and receive a variance in the future, obviously pass this hearing, or remove the structure.
Mr. President, Councilmember Borden, I mean, Bruce is right. I mean, certainly, if that's an issue, you can make that a condition of the final plat, that the building either be removed or they apply for a variance because it doesn't qualify.
We've done that before, I believe.
We have.
Isn't that right, Bill? We have done that before.
Yes, we have.
Yeah. Mr. President, correct me if I'm wrong, but Josh, in your initial presentation, when you mentioned the building the first time, didn't you say unless council grants a waiver?
Correct, but that does not give me the authority to say you can grant a waiver. That's a legal question. So that's Mr. Neri to answer that, and I believe he has.
Unless council can, or unless council does, but I'm not saying if you can. Okay. If the applicant has a question. I'm wondering if the applicant heard this before just now.
Yes, thank you. I guess I'm a little confused because I was in that, that meeting. And I, of course, we were told that because of the requirements, staff has to say that they do not approve of that structure, but that we could take it to planning and zoning and city council and that they could make a decision otherwise. And so I'm looking at page nine here. Staff recommends that the structure be removed with the development of the first class, plat, or first phase unless approved to remain by city council. So it was always our understanding, and in fact, off the record, there was a comment made that quite often that that happened. So I'm a little confused by So I'm a little confused by, um, what was just said. It sounds like this never happens and it's never approved and that possibly city council doesn't even have the authority to prove it, to approve that, which is very confusing to me, given that it says on here in page nine, unless approved to remain by council. So I, I'm confused why it would even be a part of our application this evening or in planning and zoning if that were the case.
Mr. President, um, members of council, so the only other alternative we could think of in, in looking at this, because it's an annexation application, not an existing parcel within the city, is we have occasionally been able to annex properties with existing uses and allowed them to remain for a period of time. The applicant, from the testimony, wants it to remain forever. That has not been commonly accepted. There has usually been a sunset of when that can remain or that it cannot expand. If it is removed, it has, once it's removed, it's removed forever, or there's some sunset to when it has to be moved to another location or removed entirely. So you could condition that in a development agreement as to a sunset, but it hasn't been common, and you have had people ask for a, a, not a variance, but a, um, acceptance of a non-conforming use on a property, but it generally hasn't, has an expiration to it. And the applicant has said they don't want to ever remove it. So I, I guess that's the conundrum that we're at, is the, the only other mechanism you could choose and we could create into the development agreement will still have a requirement that it be removed at some point in time. I don't know what that is, but that's something you could discuss and make that a condition.
Mr. President? Uh, Mr. President, Mr. Neri, could we set that sunset for 2116?
As long as you're willing to do that for any other person that asks.
Mr. Neri, thinking back, we, we've, and I don't know whether we can do this with a building or not, so, but we, we grandfathered things in that, that was on the existing property. And then if they have to damage and they want to add, or if they want to add on or something like that, at that point, then it goes away. We've done that. I think we've done it with buildings, but maybe some of you guys, the rest of you guys can help me with that. But I think we have done that, but if you, if you modify it or add to it or anything else, then, then it's, the original is gone. We've done that before. Is that legal?
Mr. President, members of council, that's as we're saying, is that something you could put into the development agreement that, but commonly, that, what you just said, Mr. President, is, is one of the conditions. Normally it can't be rebuilt. Even if it burns down, it's gone. It doesn't get, it doesn't get rebuilt. If they want to change it, expand it or anything like that, they're not allowed to do that. And there is a sunset clause of some point in time that it either needs to be removed or, or it needs to be relocated on the property. So those are the normal conditions that you've had in those types of things. Again, a variance wouldn't apply in this situation, but you can at annexation make that determination. It's just providing some path as to when that non-conforming use goes away, because you will get other people saying, they have it in the front yard, I want to put mine in the front yard. And we've not allowed that in other places, so.
And that would, that would be attached right to the plat, right on the plat?
Not on the plat, it would be in the development agreement.
On the development agreement, okay.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Mylum.
Well, I have a question. Bill, so what would be a, an appropriate sunset on something like this? If it's not 100 years, what is it, five years, 15 years? What is, what?
Well, Mr. President, members of council, Councilmember Mylum, I mean, it really is, is it, most of them have been, and this is a small phase development, so many times those have been based on the phases and the phasing plan, based on a number of years. Five or 10 years has normally been about the number the council has chosen, but many of those are large-scale developments that plan to develop over a five or 10-year period. So it's usually before the final phase that that has to be removed. That's probably not practical in this particular instance. So it really is up to the council on how long you want a non-conforming use to, because what happens is, for example, you set it at 10 years, the property owner now sells it in two. Now, it's in the development agreement, they should know, and eight years are going to remove it, but they aren't part of this conversation. So that becomes the code issue and the enforcement issue that we have to deal with in the future. So I would suggest not extending it very far out because it does make it problematic to enforce at a later time because it may be someone else that's standing in front of you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Borden.
Mr. President, I think should council decide that it'd be appropriate for the building to stay, that we should ward it however we have to, um, or decide to, to let him keep it, um, given that we would for anyone else in a very similar situation where it's not right up against Merton Road, it's facing properties that don't exist yet, that if somebody goes to build a house, they're going to know it's there. And so it's not that he's wanting to build one where there's already a bunch of houses around it. Um, it's property to begin with. If somebody wants to, to buy the property, move in, build a house, they're going to know it's there, it exists, that it's going to be there, and that it's, it's not going to surprise anybody. And so I, this, I think this would be a very uncommon situation for us to encounter, but that if we did in the future, it's one that makes sense.
Any other discussion? Thank you again, Kyle. Council, any other discussion before we close the public hearing?
Mr. President, curious to hear the, if, if he has any comments, the guy would like to, to hold on to it, given the new light on the situation.
I'm always welcome to talk. Mr. President, council, uh, as I stated earlier, I believe, um, I, I'm under the firm belief that if something isn't doing any harm to anybody and if it was put there for a reason, for use, um, why, why, because someone comes up with a law, no offense, laws are there for a reason, but, or a variance or a code or something, just for the sake of compliance, I find that to be truly wasteful. Um, in this instance, uh, the garage will be utilized, um, not, not just, not as a, a, a project or a warehouse or a, um, place of business or anything, uh, but it will be used as a garage to store vehicle, um, and a recreational vehicle due to its size, um, which, uh, as you find throughout the city, throughout the county, um, most, uh, communities are requiring these vehicles to be within a structure. This would comply with those. Um, the, just the size of this community and the size of the homes, uh, isn't going to allow it. Nobody's going to come and say, we want to build a garage in the front yard. It's not going to be possible. This one just happens to exist.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Borden.
I think you made great points. The applicant makes great points as to this issue. The, the reason the variance question comes up is you're making a great argument in support of a variance application, right? Which is not before us, and, and the reason we have that particular carved-out rule is to ensure if there's going to be something uniquely done, um, that perhaps the conditions, um, you know, an emergency circumstance or unique circumstance, the findings that, that council has addressed, that we can make those findings to, to warrant justifying not complying with the existing code. It sounds like if that application were in front of us, it very well might be granted. And one of the comments, one of the paths to a solution that legal council identified is the idea of, and I think the staff report kind of hints at that, is it can stay if permitted by council, and I don't know if, you, you made a comment about, um, it's either, it's removed or a variance is obtained prior to final plat, as perhaps one solution. That might be something that allows an application like this to go forward. The catch is that variance application would still need to be filed and run through, and if the support for it and those unique circumstances with the geography and limited access points all exist, perhaps the variance would be warranted and the building stays, and you don't have to monkey around with the DA and sunset clauses and things like that. I don't know the timing of the, of the project and if, if, you know, that type of condition is even acceptable for something like this, that a variance be approved or it's removed prior to final plat.
Mr. President? Uh, Mr. President, members of council, Councilmember Borden, maybe to, to add on to that, and I'm not trying to say this is the same type of thing, but we did, you know, we did annex, we did approve an annexation for the Maverick property at Locust Grove and Fairview with non-conforming uses of those billboards, and we set a sunset clause. They can always ask for a variance. Doesn't mean, it doesn't have to be tied to the final plat if you don't want it to be. You can set a sunset clause, I think in that one it's 15 years?
10.
It's a 10.
10.
10. So that was 10 years. The Maverick can come in in five years and ask for a variance. I mean, they can still do that. So I mean, you can tie it to final plat, or you can advise them that the furthest out we've set any sunset was 10 years. We have a few minor structures that we've allowed where people have, um, for lack of a better term, lean-to garages to their house, and we've basically put sunset clauses or we've put the, they can't be replaced, um, in that location, they have to relocate it. So I mean, there's a couple of variations you could do to allow this to remain for a period of time, to be consistent with your other applications and not put, put future councils at some more difficult to manage time period of 25 years or 50 years or something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Borden.
I, the reason I ask the question, one, rules matter, um, as long as we follow those consistently, um, but it sounds like a structure with those conditions, um, as part of the CCNRs, seems fine to me to stick around. I just want to make sure that it's done properly. Um, and if it requires a variance, that, that gets done.
Mr. Borden, I think that, uh, uh, we did with the Maverick, uh, you know, we give them a 10-year to come back and get a variance if they want to do, up to 10 years, so we've got a presence out there. And I think we've also done it some other ways too, but I'm like you, I want to do it right. I will say that I have been in this garage, if you want to call it that, it's an awful nice garage shop. Uh, and it is a very, it is, it isn't some shabby thing that would take away from the development, so I, and I understand with that house, I mean, or with the property, I definitely wanted them myself. But anyway, going on with the meeting, any, we do, do we need any more while the public hearing's open? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing on H2016-0075.
Mr. President?
Mr. Borden.
Before I make a motion, it, maybe this is just a comment, I don't know if staff has what they need, um, planning and legal to help us articulate which route to go. The project that, in, in my eyes, I'm supportive of and want to approve, and if the dreadful one-week continuance would be merely to make sure we've got language to capture what the council wants to do if we're to approve it. So I, I can move to close the public hearing. I'm not so sure how to articulate which path the motion would go should it be approved.
Mr. President?
Mr. Neri.
I, I know the council's hesitant to want to continue things. I, I don't know if Mr. Arnold would be available a week from now. I, I guess that's the missing piece. I mean, Mr. Arnold may be able to provide you, he's a very experienced planner, and he, he, he may have considered other alternatives that we aren't aware of and staff isn't aware of, and that might be compelling enough for you to say, this is reasonable, this is the rea, most reasonable design, it's the only way it fits. Again, I'm not a planner, but, and I don't know if Mr. Arnold will be available in a week, but that might be enough information for you to then feel more comfortable in crafting a, an exception to allow it to remain based on those, that testimony with some buffering or some, some screening or something else that would, would give you comfort level that we're not creating something that we're going to have to reproduce other places. So that might be a value. I, I don't know if that impacts the project severely.
Kyle?
Yeah.
Part of the challenge was the way that this house was situated, so we really couldn't find any other way to design the house without the building being in, quote, "the front yard." Um, you know, I, I guess one suggestion that I might, uh, ask for is if we had maybe a condition of the, uh, final plan to include a variance application so that we're not held up, uh, approval, uh, that, to the condition of the final plat, uh, uh, Porsche, uh, you know, um, have that contingent, condition for the variance in the final plat stage instead of, so that a decision can be made tonight rather than just, uh, you know, postponing to the next meeting.
Mr. President? Is that your, is that your preference to go that route?
Yeah, I, I would prefer not to, I'd like to keep things moving forward, and it seems like it's a little bit, there's some gray area here. And so I, um, you know, if, if we can make that variance, if it's, if it's a variance, that, I guess that's part of the confusion too. It's, we keep saying variance, but it seems like what, um, council is saying is that city council can approve it with some sunset clause and, and the variance can be a part of it or not. The variance can be applied for at any time. Is that correct, council?
So, Mr. President, members of council, so to help clarify, because this is an annexation application, the council does have the ability to annex the property with non-conforming uses located on, on the property. Generally, in most cases, and for the very rare exception, there has been conditions upon that, and those conditions would be, again, it can't be expanded, it can't be, it can't be rebuilt, um, it can't be, um, if it, if it, again, if it burns down, it's gone. So, and usually there's a sunset clause of some period of time in which that non-conforming use needs to go away. It's more commonly used when there are non-conforming signs or non-conforming businesses of types on, on properties.
Yes, sir.
But that's, that's the rationale that we're talking about. So we can, the council can allow it, and they have generally required it sunset at some point in time. To get away from the sunset provision, the variance is another method to use under the Land Use Planning Act, and if the council grants the variance, then it can remain forever.
Right.
So that's a method, but there's real specific findings, and what staff was saying is
Right.
Under the code, they couldn't make that recommendation. The council would have to make specific findings that are the code requires that may be challenging. It doesn't mean you can't get it or they won't find that, but right now, that's not what's before them, is a variance application with the appropriate analysis and testimony regarding that.
So aside from the variance.
So this is kind of an interim way to, to move it forward
Yes, sir.
With the understanding that there may, the council may decide there's some reasonable time period that that building should be removed unless they hear it in a different context.
So if we went in the direction of a council approving it with some sort of sunset clause, who determines the language for that clause? Is that, is that determined here in this meeting, or would that be staff or staff with council?
The, the council would, would make the determination what language they would like, and then we would fashion that between both the planning staff and my staff, and that would be part of a development agreement. And if, if you felt the language wasn't consistent with the council directed, then we'd have that discussion with the council.
So if we, if we approved it and moved forward, that that could be incorporated in the development agreement and part of the final plat, agreeing on that language?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Mylum.
I guess one thing to consider would be since there are no guarantees on a variance or whether or not you might lose this building.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we close the public hearing and make a decision, do you want Steve to look at this again and see if there's any kind of change that he can make?
You know, we, we've, we have, I, I really think we've explored those options. It's just, i- if you, if you look at the way the two houses are, they face each other. So there's really no way to create, uh, we, I think we've explored those options. Thank you for suggesting that, I appreciate it. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
You weren't texting Steve right there, were you?
Yes, I was.
He's recovering.
No, he's, he's got surgery tomorrow.
Okay.
So I was reading his text to me, he's watching.
He's in pain.
Oh, he's watching.
Yes, so he said, "We could have them condition the final plan on that." That's where I came up with that. I'm not that smart.
He knows his stuff here.
Yeah.
President.
Palmer.
So then, before, just before, 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 at least a couple of us over here are thinking, we do that with a sunset, and then you come with a variance whenever you want, within that time period, and whatever that particular council, whether it's eight years from now, or next month.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle, again. Counsel. We need to keep it open, or are we ready to close it?
Ready to close. Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
Move we close item 8F, H-2016-0075.
Second.
Got a motion and second to close H-2016-0075. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Counsel, what's your pleasure? Need some discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
We'll find out. I move that we approve item 8F, H-2016-0075, and as a condition of the annexation, that the accessory detached structure must either be removed, or the applicant have been granted a variance prior to issuance of the final plat.
We got a second.
Second.
Got a second? Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird. Aye. Okay, moving on. 8G, the public hearing for Gemtone Center, H-2016-0105. It's you, Sonia.
Here it is.
Thank you.
Council President Byrd, councilman. The next application before you is a request for a vacation. This site is located at 2425, 2463, and 2501 East State Avenue, on the north side of East Pine Avenue, just west of North Hickory Avenue. This property was platted as Gemtone Center Number 5. A property boundary adjustment was recently tentatively approved to consolidate the subject lots. Final approval is contingent upon approval of the subject vacation application. The applicant is requesting approval to vacate the five-foot-wide property drainage, utility, construction, and maintenance easements along the shared side lot lines between lots 2 and 3, and lots 3 and 4, Block 5, as shown there on the highlighted area on the diagram on the right. These easements were created via the plat for this subdivision. There are no utilities within these easements. The applicant has received approval from all the applicable public utilities, Idaho Power, CenturyLink, Cable One, Intermountain Gas, Nampur Meridian Irrigation District, and Settler's Irrigation District, to vacate the easement. Approval of the subject application will allow the applicant to obtain final approval of the property boundary adjustment application to consolidate these lots and construct a building on this site. Written testimony was received from Jason Densmer in agreement with the staff report. Staff is recommending approval and will stand for any questions.
Any questions for Sonia? This time. Is the applicant represented?
Thank you, sir. My name is Jason Densmer with the Land Group. Our address is 462 East Shore Drive in Eagle. Sonia's summary of the application and our agreement with the, with the staff report is correct. I don't have any thing to add unless you have specific questions for me.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anybody in the public that would like to testify? Seeing none, counsel, do we need to have any more questions answered, or anything before we close the public hearing?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Mylum.
I move that we close the public hearing on H-2016-0105.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to close the public hearing on H-2016-0105. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. President.
Mr. Martin.
I move that we approve H-2016-0105.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve it, any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird. Aye. Okay, next one is H, 8H, public hearing for Laurel's Townhouses, H-2016-0065. Sonia, that's you, too.
Why, it is. Thank you, President, councilman. The next application is a request for a rezone, preliminary plat, and development agreement modification. This site consists of 1.38 acres of land, its own TNR, and located at 2116 South Accolade Avenue, south of East Overland Road, and west of South Eagle Road. This property was annexed back in 2006 with an R-15 zoning district and the requirement of a development agreement, along with a preliminary plat for Kenai subdivision. A modification to the agreement was approved in 2007, along with a rezone from R-15 to TNR, and a new preliminary plat for Gramercy subdivision. The property is currently designated on the future land use map as mixed-use regional. The applicant has submitted a request to city council, as you're hearing tonight, for a modification to the existing development agreement to change the land use and building elevations from live-work units to solely living units. The brownstone elevations on your left there were the live-work units that were previously proposed, and included in the development agreement. The ones on the right are what are proposed with this application, that are just strictly living units. A rezone of 1.87 acres of land is proposed from the TNR to the R-15 zoning district, consistent with the mixed-use regional future land use map designation. The rezone will facilitate the development of 20 townhome units on this site. A preliminary plat is also proposed, on the left there, consisting of 20 building lots and seven common lots on 1.38 acres of land in the proposed R-15 zoning district. A north-south local street is proposed along the east boundary, and a public alley is proposed off the local street for access to the proposed townhomes. A north-south pedestrian pathway is proposed mid-block within the development. Written testimony has been received from Scott Noriyuki, the applicant, in agreement with the staff report. The commission did recommend approval of the subject rezone and preliminary plat applications. Scott Noriyuki testified at the public hearing in favor. No one testified in opposition or commented. Written testimony was received from Scott Noriyuki, the applicant, in agreement with the staff report. The only key issue of discussion by the commission was they were in favor of the mix of housing types this project will provide adjacent to the approved multifamily residential units. Commission did not change any of staff's recommendation, and there are no outstanding issues for counsel. Written testimony since the commission hearing was received from Scott Noriyuki, the applicant, in agreement with the commission recommendation. Staff will stand for any questions.
Any questions for Sonia? Okay, Scott?
Scott Noriyuki, Northside Management, 6810 Fair Hill Place, Boise, Idaho. I don't have anything to add. Sonia's done a great job, and as you can tell, I've already agreed with the conditions of approval. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Scott? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. This is a public hearing, is there anybody in the public that would like to testify? Seeing none, Scott, you don't need to reply then. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
Close the public hearing on item 8H-2016-0065.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing on Laurel Townhouses. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve item 8H, H-2016-0065.
Okay, second.
Got a motion and a second to approve H-2016-0065. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Takes care of our action items. We go to number nine, which is an executive session, as per Idaho State Code. I need a motion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we move into executive sex, executive session per Idaho State Code 74-206A-1A.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to move into Idaho State Code Executive Session. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.